The time is now 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be led by Pastor Larry Goodwin of The Refuge.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you join me in prayer? Father, we thank you today for a beautiful day. We thank you for bountiful blessings and we thank you for the privilege of being able to be a part of this community. We thank you for your blessings over our community, our city, and prospering us. And Father, we just ask as we move forward into our future that you would guide us, that you would lead us. We thank you for these members today who are willing to give their time to serve, to see our city prosper and our city move forward. I pray your blessings upon them, their families, and all the things that they consider, Lord. We just ask that as we consider the things that are before the council, not just in this meeting, but in every meeting, we pray that our council would have the heart of our entire community, that we would move forward in what's best for all of us. Because, Lord, we know that when it goes well for our city, it goes well for us. So we just speak your blessing over Denison. We speak your blessing over the families of this community. And we pray that your purpose would prevail in all that we do. And we give you honor, we give you glory. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. This evening, we are honored to have with us representative from the Boys and Girls Club. We have with us Caleb Jason. Caleb, where are you? Zoe Reed. Caleb is from Lamar Elementary. Zoe Reed is from Terrell Elementary. Hi, Zoe. Lexi Pipkin from BMAC. And Jamie Pipkin from Scott Middle School. They are going to lead us in our pledge this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, anytime you're ready.
To the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have two very special proclamations to present. The first one is Public Service Recognition Week. You know, there are a group of people who serve us all regularly. Those are... those public servants are the lifeblood of our democracy. And they include researchers, scientists, our frontline workers, our educators, our first responders, our elected officials, and our military service members. And countless others that we have not named. So if Amy Lay, our Director of Employee Services, will meet me at the podium, we will recognize these public servants that serve us on a regular basis. You'll have to bear with me. I'm struggling this evening with my voice. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels. These unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working and are an integral part of American society, serving our citizens at every level. And whereas, public employees often commit themselves under oath to serve the needs of our citizens while maintaining the highest traditions and ideals of public service. And whereas, public servants are ordinary Americans who answer the call to do extraordinary things, giving their time and in some cases risking and giving their lives to make life better for all of us. Without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And whereas, in the face of unprecedented challenges over the past few years, dedicated public servants have risen to the moment, bringing strength, healing, and hope to their communities. Our public servants are a living reminder that here in America, we take care of one another and leave no one behind. And whereas, public servants are the lifeblood of our democracy, they are our researchers and scientists, our frontline workers, our educators, our first responders, our elected officials, and our military service members, among countless others. And whereas, this week, we raise our glass to the people employed in the public sector and shine the spotlight on their work and encourage all citizens to celebrate, admire, and honor the people who deliver public service to us. Now therefore I, Janet Gott, Mayor of the City of Denison and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens that the week of May 7th through 13th, 2023, is Public Service Recognition Week and recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. Signed, Janet Gott, Mayor of the City of Denison. And Amy, as much as I'd like to shake your hand, we're gonna...
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Could we ask all of our public servants to stand up and let us recognize you? Counsel? Counsel? Thank you all for all that you do. Tonight also, we have a proclamation drawing attention to mental health, a problem that we deal with on a regular basis. And if the Chair, Mr. Brett Smith, Gail Utter, Judge Larry Phillips, President of Grayson College, Jeremy McMillan, and let me see who else is supposed to be here that I don't... Chief Gudgeon, come on down. And sir?
Dale Jackson.
All right. These folks serve on the Texoma Behavioral Health Leadership Team, and they deal on a daily basis with solutions to the mental health problem that we suffer from in Grayson County. So we are very grateful for these folks who are willing to give their time. And it is very appropriate that we raise attention to the mental health issue. So let me read and make official this proclamation. Whereas each May, we raise awareness about the importance of mental health and its impact on the well-being of all citizens, including children, adults, and families. Mental health is an essential part of overall individual health, and it is vital that we, as a community, understand its importance. And whereas the area that someone lives in plays a significant role in their overall health and well-being, surroundings can impact if, how, and when a person's needs are met, which in turn affects mental health. Having safe, stable, and healthy home conditions set the foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health. And whereas with early and effective interventions, these individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support preventive efforts. And whereas, adults and children with mental illness must have ready access to the best treatments, services, and supports leading to recovery. And whereas, the State of Texas designated Texoma Community Center as the local mental health authority, intended to be a vital component and strategic partner in all stakeholders and service providers who make up the local continuum of mental health services in the Texoma area. And whereas, the Texoma Behavioral Health Leadership Team, formed in 2017, brings together local community stakeholders from many agencies in many areas of education, healthcare, business, government, law enforcement, judiciary, nonprofit management, help, mental health, nonprofit funding, and family advocacy to collaborate toward much-needed local solutions to concerns such as access to care, jail diversion, stigma reduction, and equitable funding. Now therefore I, Janet Gott, Mayor of the City of Denison, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2023, to be Mental Health Awareness Month. In the City of Denison, and urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the City of Denison to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health condition. Signed, Janet Gott, Mayor of the City of Denison. This group does on a regular basis to improve our mental health in our Texoma region.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for... And you're welcome to say something if you'd like.
Just briefly.
Okay.
We've made incredible strides. First of all, I want to thank the City Council for having us here, and this is so important because today is May 1, and this is the first of many proclamations of what we do across the county. Ms. Gail Utter to my left was one of the co-founders, Judge Larry Phillips, past Chair. I'm currently the Chair of Texoma Behavioral Health Leadership Team. Dr. Jeremy McMillan will be taking my spot. His Vice Chair will be the incoming Chair next year. You want to talk a little bit about the work that you do, sir?
I'm the Chief of Strategic Officer at Texoma Community Center.
And everything essentially germinates from TCC, which is our LMHA, our Local Mental Health Authority. We can't do anything without those partners, so very important. And obviously Chief Gudgeon, who you all are very familiar with, he's an integral part of our Board and helps with jail diversion and things of that nature. So we've made incredible strides in the past five years, just again with access to care, jail diversion, and reducing stigma. And we have a lot of work to continue to do, but we've made incredible strides. So I just want to thank everyone that's here. You got it.
Thank you. Thank you all. At this point in every meeting, we set aside time for any citizen to make public comments about any action item that is listed on the agenda. In order to speak, you must fill out a request to speak card before reaching this point in our agenda. We do have two request to speak cards, one from Robert Crocker and one from Charlie Means. And this is a public hearing, so we will call on you at that point in the meeting when we address that agenda item, if that's okay with each of you. You don't need to for a public hearing. I will recognize anybody that wants to speak when we address that item. Okay? All right. The consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve items A and B on the consent agenda.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Courtwright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Did I... Was it you? Okay, would the record reflect that it was Councilmember Thorne who seconded it?
I'll second it.
You can second it if you want.
Third.
All right. All right. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a resolution in support of a grant application to the Texas Department of Transportation, 2023 Transportation Alternatives Set Aside TA Program to assist with funding for Phase 2 of the Katy Trail Project. Mr. Eastwood.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to present a resolution in support of a grant application to fund Phase 2 of the Katy Trail Project. As you are all aware, Katy Trail has become one of the most sought-after amenities in the region, and it is something that is highly important to our community. So I look forward to discussing this a little further. So how did we get here? Phase 1 history. In 2015, the city purchased abandoned MKT Railroad right-of-way. In 2017, the city supported the TechStot Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Application for Katy Trail Phase 1. The city was awarded funding near the end of 2017. Phase 1 of the trail is a mile in length, and it spans from Day Street to Loy Lake. It was roughly $1.1 million, with the city matching 20% of those funds being roughly $230,000. Groundbreaking took place December of 2019. Construction began 2020, that's January, and it was completed in November of 2021. Sorry, this is a little grainy, but here's a pop-out map. It just shows where we're projecting Phase 2 to go, and that is from Loy Lake to Spur 503. So some additional details regarding Phase 2. The call for projects for fiscal year 23 Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program opened on December 2nd, 2022. At that time, staff submitted a preliminary application. TechStot prioritizes projects based on initial project ranking, project readiness, and funds available. Regarding our area, the small urban area, there is $15 million sub-allocated, the anticipated future funding for this in fiscal year 23 and 24. We received some great news. One was that we were invited to participate in a final application, which we will have submitted in the next few months. And we've been in pretty close dialogue with TechStot representatives that specialize with this program, and they've let us know we have a really strong application, and they feel very confident that things will move forward really well. So some additional details regarding Phase 2. We're looking at estimated costs of a little more than $3.9 million. The city is eligible for transportation development credits, which will be applied in lieu of a local match. So if you're not familiar, transportation development credits are federal transportation funding tools used to meet federal matching requirements. For TechStot 2023 projects, projects located in a community of less than 50,000 and located outside a designated transportation management area are eligible to receive 100% federal funds to be applied to the project in lieu of the local match. It was determined that our city is eligible for the TDC funds, so there should not be any cost to the city. So the project, as mentioned, will span from Loy Lake to Spur 503. That's roughly 1 and 1/4 mile. And it will be a continued trail that mimics Phase 1, which will be a 12-foot-wide, multi-use, ADA-compliant, concrete trail with respite areas, benches, water fountains, and bike racks. We do want to start at the bridge as part of this project. We feel there's opportunity to add landscaping where the bridge is at, off Loy Lake, and needed beautification. So anticipated notification of award will be later this year or early next. Now, this is a public hearing. I received a letter in support from Parks and Recreation Commissioner, Mr. Ryan Cassell, which is placed at your dais in front of you. Additionally, you have in front of you a message of support from Mr. Jim Hall of the North Texas Mountain Bikers. Mr. Hall is presently on a multi-day mountain biking trip riding the Katy Trail in Missouri today. Staff recommends approval to move forward with a resolution in support of the grant application for the Katy Trail Phase 2 project through the Texas Department of Transportation's 2023 Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Program. Parks Administrative Superintendent Chip Egger will be the project manager. Chip and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Eastwood?
So with us being able to use those travel, those credits, are any other communities doing anything where they also try to put some cash in too? Does that help the application? I know some of the stuff with the highways kind of helps that way.
That's a good question. I don't know offhand, but something definitely worth navigating. And I'll make sure we... We are dialoguing with TechStot, so I'll make sure I bring that up.
Just really excited about the next phase. I want to make sure we win.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Eastwood? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? And of course, Mr. Crocker has indicated he wishes to speak. Will you come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. I'm Bob Crocker.
Mr. Crocker, would you pull the microphone?
Sure.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Just try that.
Here we go.
Okay. Hi, I'm Bob Crocker. I live in Rickett Street in Sherman, but I am here to talk to you on behalf of the Texoma Parks and Trails Alliance, which is a hiking group that we go to Sherman, Denison, Bonham, out to the lake, and get to get out and use the trails and get outdoors and enjoy some time together. And we are very excited that you all are considering expanding the Katy Trail. It's something we would like to look forward to use. We love going around Waterloo, and so extending to go around Waterloo and being able to extend that out is something we would very much support. Also, I noticed that one of your agenda items was Mental Health Month. I don't find anything better for your mental health, assuming it's not something medication-related, but just for an average person to get out and be outdoors, appreciate the beauty of nature, and get a little bit of exercise. So TPTA supports the Katy Trail.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Means, would you state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Hello, my name is Charlie Means, 609 Roar Ridge. I'm also the Chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission, and we offer full support to Justin and his resolution to move forward with the Katy Trail Phase 2. I also spoke to the Chairman of the Board at 609 Roar Ridge at home, and she wanted me to leave a message with you guys. So I asked her what her feelings were about it, and she was... She said, "Well, it's really kind of sad." I'm like, "Well, that wasn't exactly what I was looking for, but what do you mean by sad?" She's like, "Well, you get to the bridge, and it's over, and you're going to turn around and go home, so we want some more." So we're in full favor of it, and it's been a pleasure working with Justin and his staff on the commission, and we want to do anything we can to help him move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Means. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on... Hold on, hold on, hold on. Wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Okay. George, would you come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, I'm George Mason. I live on Park Village in Denison. I can't believe it's been, what, six years since Denison purchased the right-of-way from the railroad? And we did the groundbreaking in December of 2019, and here we are looking at Phase 2. Comment about the bridge made me think of something. When I lived up in the Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania area, we had a bridge that was uncompleted, and it was referred to as the Bridge to Nowhere, which I think about every time I see the Loy Lake Bridge. So maybe it'll be going somewhere. The importance of this phase is that, as you know, we've adopted a Parks and Trails master plan for the City of Denison. I look at the Katy Trail as the backbone of that plan. That can interconnect... Well, we interconnect three different major parks in the city, THF Park, Waterloo Lake Park, and the practice soccer field up on Crawford Street. So that trail is instrumental in getting things going. You are looking at prospective growth in the City of Denison in the future. People coming up from McKinney, Plano, looking to relocate here, they're going to be looking at the trails and the parks in the area. Our parks are great. The trails, they're coming along. So the Katy Trail, I think, will be a really great thing to convince them that this is the place to live. Also, I spoke to someone else who goes down to McKinney and Plano to ride trails down there. They're done riding. They go into the city, and they shop around, they have dinner, they spend money. So the trail can attract people from other places, and our businesses will benefit from that. My own observations of the trail, maintenance-wise, it's been excellent. The city's doing a great job on it. It takes minimal upkeep, but it's always clean, no trash. And I've noticed that even the people who are using the trail are helping with the cleanup. So that's a great thing. My own experience, it always seems to be safe and secure for anybody to use. I've seen people out there with strollers with your young kids in them. I've seen young children on bikes with training wheels riding up and down the trail. I've seen hikers, I've seen runners, skateboarders. So it's really a multi-use trail. And one of the things I love about it, you know, my wife and I both go over and walk the trail around the lake. But after a rain, that's not such a good idea. The Katy Trail, being that it's paved, it's always in good condition. So we go there to walk. I just love it. And I've spoken to many of my natural friends. They're having a great time over there right now because migratory birds are going through. And one person in particular showed me a list of about 60 birds, 60 different species. She saw just going up and down the trail. So it's really a cool place. And please, support it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda... Hold on, sir. There was someone behind you that had their hand up first, so if you'll state your name and address for the record, please, Mr. Spindel.
David Spindel, 1307 South Lane. I guess I may or may not be representing any group. I'm representing a homeowner that lives on the trail. I live two houses north of where the Waterloo Lake Drive crosses the Katy Trail. So it's really at my back door. I'm probably as close to that trail as I am to as anybody else on Lane Street except for my neighbor to the south. The trail's excellent, just as George spoke about the way it's kept, the design of it is excellent. I meet people all the time coming from the north walking the trail. They're accessing that trail to come down and use Waterloo Lake Park. You know, it's not just the trail. They're using it to do the park. Spoke about the bridge. My grandson and I went down and watched them install that bridge and watched them put it up and talked to a young engineer. She probably wasn't 22 years old. Just thrilled to death because at the time, may still be, it was the longest-span pedestrian bridge in the state of Texas. I don't know if that's still true or not, but she was thrilled to death because she had helped design this, and she was there watching. and she was there watching it go in. So I want to see that continued. I want to see, you know, it'd be a shame to end that bridge right there with the time and the money they spent putting that in and the support that we had doing that. If you walk the trail, this isn't just, you know, a trail. My son lives in Tyler, and they put a trail on an old railroad track too. But it's got houses on every side. It's not as rural as our trail is. If you've ever walked on past that bridge and walked down that way, you'll see wonderful nature, what I call the woods. I grew up in what we called the woods as a kid. And the trail to the north and the trail to the south is just that. You can see cows, you can see a bobcat. I've seen rabbits, I've seen hawks, I've seen owls. All the nature that's along there. And if you go down that trail, you'll see an old railroad trestle going over a creek that is very deep, big ravine. It's just gonna be beautiful once that trail's in there. So I just hope that, you know, the council will, just as last time, support this endeavor for Phase Two because I think it'll just benefit, it's gonna bring those people again from the south to Loy Lake Park. I think this park is the gem of our community. Nothing is THF or the other parks. That park offers so many things to so many diverse people that some, a lot of the other parks don't.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name's Tom Busby, and I live at 1813 Woodland Park Drive, which is right on the trail. And I just want to say thank you to Dennison for all the outdoor opportunities that you provide, Waterloo Lake and the pickleball courts, the, you know, mountain bike riding and all of that. But I want to speak, the three gentlemen before me pretty much laid a lot of things out that I'm in favor of, but I will add one more thing. I'm the proud owner of an 11-year-old border collie, and she loves using Waterloo Park, and we, and she looks forward to the day that we can go behind her house and walk all the way over to Waterloo. And we just, we're very much in favor of this, you know, moving forward with Phase Two, and we hoping that it happens very soon. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Massey, state your name and address for the record, please.
Josh Massey, Highland Park Drive in Dennison, Texas. Recently, I've had the opportunity to speak to lots of my neighbors in the South District of Dennison. 100% support. The only caveat, I would say, is they are concerned about parking and signage because some of the roads down there flowers and the egress onto 503 can be somewhat dicey and blind for high-speed traffic. So they have asked for me to speak to you and say if you can make sure that there is parking to keep attendees of the park from prioritizing these short cul-de-sac streets that are in that neighborhood just north of Spur 503, and to make sure that there's adequate signage so that cross paths for pedestrians and bicycles are protected against the traffic running down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Going, going? If not, this public hearing has closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution in support of the grant application for the Katy Trail Phase Two project through the Texas Department of Transportation's Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Program.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Thank you all for your interest in the Katy Trail. This seems to be a consensus in Dennison that we want the Katy Trail. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on ordinance revision, amending Chapter 26 Utilities, Article 2, Sewer Use, Wastewater and Stormwater Disposal, Division 5 Regulations of Discharge and Sewer Connections, Section 26-117, Specific Pollutant Limitations, Adopting New Discharge Limits for Significant Industrial User or Other Permitted Uses. Ms. Sterns?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That's a hard act to follow. We're here tonight because we're updating our technically-based local limits for our wastewater system. The TCEQ requires modifications to the city's Chapter 26 Utilities, Article 2, the water use, I'm sorry, sewer use, wastewater and stormwater disposal. The TCEQ has proposed our pre-treatment program, Technically-Based Local Limits, major modification, which is what is before you tonight. The required modification will replace existing local limits with the approved updated local limits. And I'm present for questions.
Questions for Ms. Sterns? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance revision, amending Chapter 26 Utilities, Article 2, Sewer Use, Wastewater and Stormwater Disposal, Division 5 Regulation of Discharge and Sewer Connections, Sections 26 through 117, Specific Pollutant Limitations, Adopting New Discharge Limits for Significant Industrial User or Other Permitted Users.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hender and a second by Councilmember Courtwright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on an ordinance for right-of-way abandonment for a portion of land being part of the J. Streper Survey, Abstract Number 1156, also identified as a 70 feet of public right-of-way of Memorial Drive, as shown by deed of record in Volume 1921, Page 539 of Deed of Records of Grayson County, Texas, Case Number 2023-034RO-DU. Ms. York?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am bringing a request to abandon a portion of the right-of-way from Memorial Drive. If you, you may recall, in December of 2021, there was applicants that came before the council requesting a rezone of the portion that's outlined in blue from office to MF2 multifamily residential. At that time, they, staff had implied that the applicant could potentially come forward in the future to request the abandonment of the portion of right-of-way that is within their property boundaries, and they have come forward. The proposed abandonment is the yellow portion. It's not accurate, but that is the portion that they are requesting the city to abandon. And as you can tell from the right picture, that is within their property boundaries or their development, their potential development. And this is a survey that they have provided city staff. At the time of the rezone, this was a preliminary site plan that they had provided as a zoning exhibit. The applicant has also provided this preliminary site plan to staff just to show why they are requesting that right-of-way abandonment. This is not a submitted site plan. This is just basically a concept plan just showing why the abandonment is needed for their development. Staff has not received any formal site plan submittals, preliminary plat submittals, final plat submittals, anything of that nature. This is just to show where the right-of-way intersects with their potential development and why they are requesting that abandonment. As this is zoned for multifamily, this is their proposed layout at the time that they requested the zoning. It is possible that whenever they come forward for a site plan or a preliminary plat, that the units that you see there could be significantly less. It just depends on what the civil engineering comes up with or what they propose at the time that they come forward with the site plan. Speaking to what is within that right-of-way, Public Works has stated that there is water, sewer, and storm infrastructure located within the portion of the right-of-way requested to be abandoned. I'm not gonna give you whiplash, I'm just gonna go back to this. The developer, staff has made the developer aware that they will be responsible for relocating or providing easements for those utilities just to ensure that the utilities that are provided, the surrounding development, excuse me, does not go without the utility services that are provided in that location for access. There aren't any commercial businesses that are within that northern portion of where that Memorial right-of-way drive is. However, there are a few businesses to the south that have access off of Martin Luther King, and then there are also some to kind of the northwest that have adequate access off of State Highway 91. Per Section 2184 of the City of Dennison Code of Ordnances, the applicant is to pay the city an appraised value of the property. We have that appraisal, it was a part of the agenda packet, and the appraised value came out to $35,000. And staff is in receipt of that payment. And depending on council's decision tonight, we will retain those funds. And if for some reason this is denied or tabled, it's possible that those funds will be refunded to the applicant. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this request at their meeting held on April 25, 2023. Staff does recommend approval of the right-of-way abandonment request, and I am present for any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. York?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
This may be a Julie question, so I might have to wait. If, if we give up this right-of-way to them, can they legally go ahead and bulldoze that section right now without having a plan, without having a planned development plan?
I, you mean to tear up the right-of-way?
Yeah, just tear up that road right there, and so...
I, Julie may speak more to this, but I think since there's utilities and infrastructure in there...
With utilities, when the, when the city abandons right-of-way, we always reserve a utility easement so that infrastructure that's in the ground can remain there and be used. But as to the surface, I would say if they got appropriate permits, once they're the owner, they could, they could do what they wanted on the surface.
I didn't understand, Julie. They can do what they want?
They could, they could remove it.
You're, you're, you have a, you have an impediment in between the two of us, and I'm not hearing you.
They could remove the existing roadway once they're the owners of the surface, but not any utilities that are in the ground.
So, Ms. York, did I understand you to say that the applicant hasn't given any reason why they want this abandoned?
No, ma'am. I'm sorry if I wasn't, I probably didn't make it clear. This proposed site plan, as I, it was proposed, or it was part of the zoning exhibit when they requested a rezone back in 2021. They submitted this with their right-of-way abandonment application to further show why they are requesting that abandonment. And it looks like, based on this preliminary site plan, please understand this has not been submitted for formal review, it looks like they are trying to place units on what is now the Memorial Drive right-of-way. And so they are looking to utilize the right-of-way that is there to integrate that into their development in the future for multifamily units. Yes, sir.
Should I wait for discussion council to express a concern?
No, you, you go ahead.
So this is my concern. Without a definitive development plan, they could certainly get this right-of-way, remove the road, which makes it more suitable to resell, right? I mean, I get, at some point, we probably will need to do this. But this does affect those businesses that are on Memorial Drive. And if we were to give it up without a definitive plan in place to have access points to Memorial Drive, they could easily just remove the road, and then that affects the businesses there, and then they sit on it until they can sell it again, right? So that's a concern that I have. I personally would like, before we give up this land, to see a definitive development plan that is gonna be in place, that has appropriate access points, before we get, I think that is, I, I believe that is the appropriate steps that need to happen in order to, for us to just give this land because I, once we give it up...
Can you give it back?
It's, you know, they can, they can do what they want, accept the utilities, but they can do things that can affect those businesses along that road, and we don't have any say in it. And they don't have any say in it. And I know I've spoken with a business owner on that that is concerned about that, and so that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
I agree. I'm concerned about the connectivity with the school district buying land north of that for a new school site. Right now, Memorial and Martin Luther King is a much easier intersection if someone had to walk to school, bike to school than Memorial Drive at State Highway 91. That's a terrifying intersection. So I, I just worry that we're gonna be cutting off that north end of town and that other way to get out of, from that school because it goes down Reba to Memorial Drive. It's how they're gonna have one of those entrances and exits. So I agree, I would rather wait and know for sure the plan.
What it's gonna look like.
Is the applicant the builder, do we know? Or are they just an agent?
I, I would, I'd be lying if I told you that I knew for sure, but I do believe that they are just the property owner at the time.
Okay.
They are 50% partner.
50%.
50% partner.
So this isn't, so it is possible that once we give up the right-of-way, they could just sell the land to someone to develop, correct?
That is correct.
So I, yeah, that, I already stated what I think.
So, Julie, what is the, what is the normal process? Is the right-of-way abandoned usually prior to plating? I mean, I guess they have to know if it's been abandoned in order to plat it. So what, what is the normal process?
You can use a plat. Obviously, when they do come to plat, you're not gonna want to show this right-of-way on the plat if you know you're going to abandon it, although it could be abandoned after plating. But by the time you're plating, your zoning is done, and you, you know, you have a better idea of where things are going to go, and then if any other access points are needed, those could be added to the plat. So, but really, there's no standard time. I mean, really, each one is fact-specific. I mean, if it, if it seems like it needs to be used, then usually it is at the time of development. If it's something that nobody's using or sometimes the right-of-way never even gets improved or paved, then you may see it when there's no development actually planned.
So, can there, can there be a stipulation to the abandonment that it is contingent upon the development moving forward to the person that it was abandoned to? Did that make any sense at all?
I don't, I don't think that would be legally enforceable in the deed.
Wouldn't be legally enforceable?
Yeah.
So what is legally enforceable?
Well, you can deny it or approve it. I mean, you could do a development agreement potentially where you, a plan for the property is laid out, and then you're figuring out what the alternative's gonna be and what's gonna be there before you're doing the abandonment. But when property's already in the city limits, you can't really put land uses in there because you have zoning, and you have, you have to use the zoning. I mean, you could potentially, you could do a planned development that has, you know, site plan and concept plan and more detail included about access, and that it's anticipated that might be abandoned in the future. But, you know, until it's abandoned, we can't guarantee how any particular council's gonna vote.
And the applicant's not here tonight?
He doesn't appear to be.
Was the applicant at the planning and zoning meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, let me open the public hearing and see if there's anyone here wishing to speak. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? State your name and rec, and address for the record, please, Mr. Munson.
I'm John Munson. I live at eleven-twenty-seven West Morton, Dennison. I've been involved in this area, oh, since about nineteen-eighty-nine. We put in Life Search Master Plan, community built all the streets. Probably have sixty million of development out there in assisted living, nursing home. If it is now autistic care, there's still a thirty-five thousand square foot rehab hospital. The Reba Ranch has been converted into an Alzheimer's unit. There's about eight different businesses on Memorial that are either east or south, east, southeast, or west. And I've also been involved with the school and its new site, which we put together with the school. And it's gone through, it's forty-five acres. It faces FM eighty-four. It fronts on its east boundary along Armstrong, which about half of Armstrong is abandoned. City right-of-way is still there. And then the other half going north is being dedicated for extension of Armstrong. And I am basically in favor of these apartments.
You're what, sir?
In favor of the apartments, okay? But I ha, I fail to understand why Memorial would be closed. Now, understand, there is a couple, maybe less than two acres on the north side of Memorial that is the north hospital parking lot, okay? I think the concept here is to join the two pieces. And then you'd have cul-de-sacs on the east property line so you could go south on Memorial down to MLK. And then on the west property line, again, a cul-de-sac. You'd leave some offices on dead-end streets, which I think is a negative. But the basic question, you know, you could build the apartments on the parking lot and still have Memorial. And when you think about that parking lot and what happened there with the hospital, the reason that road is in there is because the hospital, being a big traffic generator, and as you may remember, the emergency room and parking was on the east side of the hospital. And then on the north side was another parking lot. And basically, the proposed apartments, which may be four-hundred-and-seventy-five, four-hundred-and-ninety apartments, something like that, guess what? They probably generate a traffic count similar to the hospital, okay? So you can't rely on MLK. In other words, you need Memorial to move east and west. Gives people two alternatives. You could go out of the north side of the apartments. They do have entries on MLK planned. Not a good intersection, but they do have entries there and on the north side and on the east side. And so I am supportive of the apartments. In fact, I know Frank May, the guy that's behind this, and I have furnished him information on the new school site. That's rather recent. This, this, I did a period P and Z. I think it was unanimously approved. But some of the questions that are being raised here are very valid. There is a changing world out there, as you know about it.
Mr. Munson?
Pardon me?
Just, you're not in favor of abandonment of the property, is that, do I understand that?
No, I'm not in favor of it. Let me, let me make, if you're trying to...
Well, you have three minutes.
Okay.
And you have exceeded your three minutes, so...
Okay, well, let me, let me point out a very valid point, and it's been raised. If kids are trying to get to this new fifth and grade, sixth grade school, the only way to get there without getting on ninety-one and/or eighty-four is via Memorial Drive off of MLK. And you go up Reba, and then you, we're fixing to take Life Search Way in, in a joint venture with the school north all the way to eighty-fourth. So Life Search Way, Reba can get kids there safely without walking on the side of the highway. I'm all for, and I work with Frank May to get this done. And unfortunately, as some of us know, we're dealing with double increases in rates and getting considerably harder to get financing and get projects built.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here? Will, will you come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Sean Jones. I own the business at one-one-one-three Memorial Drive. It's a dental office that's been there for the last forty-six years. I oppose this right-of-way abandonment. If you look at the map where Memorial Drive and Reba McIntyre Lane happen, if there is an accident there, it cuts off my entire business and the other businesses in that area of In-N-Out. If you also go and have an accident on Highway ninety-one and Memorial Drive, that cuts us off again. There's no ingress and egress if there's, if the, of traffic, if you have this abandonment of the highway, or of the Memorial Drive. I am, just like Mr. Munson, I am for the development of the area, for the apartments. But I oppose the, the right-of-way of abandonment. There's no reason for the roadway to disappear, as was brought up. It's a great way, great way for kids to get to school. It's a safe way rather than going out on the highway.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council.
I agree with everything that was, that was said, especially with, with some of the business owners like Dr. Jones. If that's been in business for forty-some-odd years, you have the expectation that that road is always going to be open. It would be like if one of the roads near our house were closed. It's kind of an unfair expectation for us to place on the businesses that, that they won't ever have that entrance or exit again that way. So I really see, see that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, you know, looking at this and just kind of studying through it and then with all the comments, something that, you know, I could see in the future, if, if the right-of-way abandonment is critical to their redevelopment of that property, in terms of for elevation changes, things of that nature, not necessarily... I, I don't like the preliminary plat that shows, you know, multiple units on actual, like a full abandonment and removal of the roadway. But I do agree with Mr. Munson in that there's no reason you couldn't still develop the property north, still maintain a thoroughfare access. But there is a possibility that, that maybe because of elevation changes such that you could do a, and this would be a Julie question, possibly a right-of-way abandonment with a rededication of a new thoroughfare plan going through that area that would incorporate possibly their new design, but yet still maintain road access. I'm assuming that'd be possible to do. So I think if we kind of headed from that approach in terms of not just saying, hey, we're not going to let you abandon the right-of-way, but we are going to expect in order, in exchange, that you're going to maintain access through, through that portion of land, I mean, through that Memorial Drive for all the other businesses. I think it could be a real positive. And it could probably update, and we could make, maybe be able to get a benefit to our street system there. The other concern I would raise would be the fact that just as Mr. Munson said and several of the others, that the number of units you're talking about, I get very concerned. I realize that that's just a, that was just, someone took that and copied and pasted it five different ways on that drawing, just to kind of give you an idea of where to go. But, but I don't see any ma, any, any, any road infrastructure throughout that development, which I know it would have to be. It can't just, you know, I, I don't see, you know, appropriate fire access. I don't, you know, police access, just kind of that schematic that they sent us. So I, I think that that needs to, I think we're just too early. This, this has a definite feel, as Dr. Courtright pointed out, of a, and I know that's not the intention, but it just has that feeling of a, we're going to bundle this up, we're going to package it, we're going to flip it to somebody else. And, and I think that's what everybody's fear is, you know? If we were a little further down the road, I could get behind it, but right now I can't.
And I, okay, so am I hearing the council that you want to table this until you can get more information about adequate access through the, are you, are you...
I think, I think we deny it, and they have to come back with a new proposal.
I think it's a start over.
Because I don't think it's something they could do at the next meeting. I think this is going to be a several-month or a while thing for them to really work on.
Is there any further discussion from council? Then I need a motion.
Mayor, I move to deny the request to abandon a portion of Memorial Drive as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hender and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item six A, receiver report, hold a discussion and take action on a resolution adopting the Brick Streets Preservation Policy. Ms. Wallantine?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to bring to you the first-ever City of Dennison Brick Street Preservation Policy. Sure, a lot of you are wondering why the city clerk is presenting this. I, too, am wondering that myself. In two thousand and twenty-one, during Bobby's first tour as city manager, he tasked me with putting, with putting together a committee and facilitating this committee to put together a policy to preserve our brick streets. So, in doing so, we reviewed and considered other cities' policies, including Rock Island, Illinois, Wilmington, North Carolina, and Tyler, Texas. We had a conference call with Tyler, Texas as well and learned a lot about their process. In early two thousand and twenty-two, we obtained a Brick Streets Condition Assessment. On our brick streets, we inventoried them and got the assessment. Surprisingly, I shouldn't say surprisingly, to our pleasant surprise, our brick streets are in really good condition with the exception of the Hundred Block of Chestnut. So based on that assessment, we categorized our streets into five categories. Categories one, two, and three reflect the brick streets that are historic. And category one being the category where we preserve them at all expense, if it's permitted. Categories four and five take into consideration our new D three brick streets, which came about because this policy took a little bit longer to create. So by the time we got to this phase, phase one had been done. So we wanted to make sure we included these brick streets as well. The, the policy is intended, like I said, to preserve historic brick streets. Let me get to my slides here. It provides a repair and removal policy for our right-of-way access users, such as utility companies who make cuts in our brick streets or removal for any other reason, development, streetscape like we have going on, et cetera. It also provides for handling and storage of the bricks removed from the city streets. Requires prior communication and permits prior to any cuts or removal of the bricks. And as you remember, last fall, our public works folks brought forward a ordinance requiring, excuse me, requiring permits for street cuts. So this does incorporate that as well. As far as long-term maintenance goes, that will be determined upon funding as it becomes available or feasible. I do hear that Ronnie Bates has a budget request for a street crew that will specialize in repairing brick streets for cuts, et cetera. So I do want to stress that this plan does not prioritize maintenance of brick streets, and it doesn't provide for funding, but it gives us a good start for right-of-way management for our brick streets, so.
Questions for Ms. Wallantine?
Here's some pictures. We do have a color-coded map that categorizes the different streets and the categories, all the way up to our new ones, our new bricks. And thank you, Fanchan Sterns, for the great pictures. So that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you. Discussion from council.
Just want to say thank you to Chris for all the work in getting this done. And this plan, you know, the reason we really started looking at it is because these streets are over a hundred years old. So for the money, we've gotten more life out of those streets than any other street in the whole city. So while we're talking a small portion, it's actually our most money-saving portion we've ever had. And, and the important thing was we wanted to hold companies accountable, utility companies and that kind of thing, if they come and cut through the streets, or especially our new downtown streets, that kind of thing, and try to see if we could get a crew, like Chris said, that would be able to specialize in all of those so that we can maintain what we're adding to our brick streets as well as our current brick streets.
Any further discussion? I need a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution adopting the Brick Streets Preservation Policy.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hender and a second by Councilmember Courtright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item six B, receiver report, hold a discussion and take action on an ordinance amending chapter twenty-one, streets, sidewalks, and right-of-way management to require right-of-way users to comply with the city's Brick Streets Preservation Policy. Ms. Wallantine?
So now that you've adopted the policy, we have to have a way to enforce it. So this provides an amendment to chapter twenty-one that allows for enforcement of this, this particular policy. It adds a section regarding restoration of pavement, pavement specific to the brick streets. So that is it.
Questions for Ms. Wallantine? Discussion from council. A motion, please.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance amending chapter twenty-one, streets, sidewalks, and right-of-way management to require right-of-way users to comply with the city's Brick Streets Preservation Policy.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hender and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Wallantine. Item six C, receiver report, hold a discussion and take action on amending the line item street twenty-twenty-three program in the Street Improvement Fund, zero-one-five, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget by increasing the budget amount from three hundred thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand to allow for the repair of various streets. Mr. Bates?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We come here tonight to ask for an amendment for the Streets two thousand, twenty-twenty-three Maintenance Program. We currently have funded three hundred thousand. However, as we were putting the program together, it came to realize that there were several other streets that needed some immediate attention. And thinking that we could ask for this amendment where we could get this in together with the other work that we're doing, it, it would probably get a better price having it all tied together. With this funding, we are doing, looking at doing Bell Street from Highway sixty-nine to the underpass. We're looking at doing sections of West Munson, South Fairbanks, and French Avenue. Sections of Vaughn Street. And a really bad section of Square Dance Road. As I mentioned, we, you see in the highlight there, we have the three hundred thousand that's set aside there. We'd like to take a hundred thousand from the Crockett Design Segment and move that down to the Streets Program and then ask for fifty thousand from the Utility Reserve Fund to make up for the four hundred and fifty thousand that we need to get these streets completed. Also to let you know, we took this to the Street Subcommittee, asking their opinions and thoughts on this. And they recommend that we go ahead and bring it forward to you guys for consideration. I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Bates? Discussion from council?
Told you all those brick streets got us our money's worth, as opposed to the asphalt.
Mayor, I would just say, you know, Mr. Bates, I appreciate your effort on this. I served on that committee for you. I, I, I like how you're getting creative, how you're making it work and, and at the same time tackling some, you know, some much-needed work and trying to make those dollars go as far as they can. So I appreciate your efforts on that.
Thank you.
I need a motion, please.
Mayor, I move to approve the amendment to the Street Improvement Fund, zero-one-five, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Spiegel and a second by Councilmember Hender. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven A, receive report, hold a discussion regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget and tax rate adoption schedule. Ms. Osseball.
Good evening. I'm, I'm here this evening to give you an overview of our proposed budget and tax rate adoption schedule for the fiscal year twenty-four budget. It's already that time again. In March of each year, we do a budget kickoff with staff and we go over like our budget forms and answer commonly, or common questions that are usually asked. In April, we receive our preliminary appraisal numbers from the chief appraiser. And for tax year twenty twenty-three, we receive those on April the sixth. So April through September, staff will present a budget updates at the council meetings. And in June, the city manager will hold discussions with each division and go over their anticipated needs for the upcoming budget year. On June the thirtieth, a workshop will be held with council and staff and to discuss budget priorities for the upcoming year. And by July the twenty-fifth, the city will receive the certified values from the chief appraiser. These values give us an idea of where we stand financially with meeting our budget needs. In August and September, we will publish our proposed tax rate, a notice of hearing, and hold a hearing regarding the proposed tax rate. And on August the eleventh, we will file the budget with the city clerk, our proposed budget. And on September fifth, our budget and tax rate is scheduled to be adopted. So it's a repeat of last year, what we do every year. We have no recommendations on this agenda item. We're just here to present our budget cycle and to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Osseball? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is an information item only and does not require action by council. Pursuant to Chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene in executive sessions from time to time, as seen necessary during this meeting, to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same. Section five-five-one dot zero seven one. Confer with city attorney regarding seven hundred West Main. Confer with city attorney regarding Apex Circle LLC, case number twenty-three dash C V dash zero zero one nine five dash J D K, U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Texas and Apex East Coast LLC, case number twenty-three C V zero zero one nine one J D K, U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Texas. Confer with city attorney regarding tax increment reinvestment zone number two. Deliberations regarding economic development negotiations pursuant to Chapter five-five-one dot zero eight seven. Discuss information received regarding development prospects in tax increment reinvestment zone number two. The time is seven thirteen and the council is now in executive session.